I have one public comment here, a request from Ms. Cannon. Ms. Cannon?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning to you.
Good morning.
This concerns the Department of Public Safety. And before I start, I can say that I was at the Chieflin Senior Center yesterday, and with my husband. And there was, among other things, a presentation by Ms. Mandy Doris, if I got the name right, from EMS, who was teaching the seniors how to do CPR. At the CPR class. And then we received superb instruction. And I greatly appreciate it. So, that having been said, and that came from the heart, and I mean it, I hope you do. Um, now, let's get to business. The persons that work for the Levy County Department of Public Safety, meaning the EMTs, paramedics, whatever other long titles fallen that category, are their county employees.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, so, since the answer is yes, why did they not receive a pay raise in 2013 when the rest of the county employees received a pay raise?
Because they operate under a different union, and they collectively bargained separate from our bargaining unit that is at the road department and the other county departments. There are a few of the Department of Public Safety employees that fall under the union, fall under our other unions.
So, if I understand you correctly, Mr. Chairman, the pay raise that has been received by other county employees is union negotiating, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And what is the name of that union?
The union that received the raise is the 860 Union, I believe is the teaching union.
Local 630 is one that covers all of the county employees, other than the paramedics and EMS, as a local IAF, uh, local union number 469.
Is there a... Pretend for a minute that I wanted to apply for a role as EMT and had to collect training or that. Why would those... So, is some... Okay. Attorney Brown can possibly know. Is there a statute saying who gets represented by what unions?
At one time, the local 630 out of Jacksonville represented the whole county. And at some point around 2002, '03 or '04, they separated. So EMS and the paramedics went under another union. And yes, it is up their choosing, I think, the local union.
And they don't have to be in the union at all if they choose not to, but they're still represented, even if they don't pay their dues.
Yeah, fair, union eligible, they are... There's like fourteen paying members in the local union 630, but if you're union eligible, you get those same benefits and all, you just don't have dues paying members. And it's the same way with EMS and paramedics. I don't think there's a hundred percent of them, but it's all a union.
All right. Now, my next question is, why the employees of DPS have been working without a contract for more than a year?
The... Both unions probably at times go beyond the expiration of their union contract, but they're still under those guidelines. This process, this union negotiation that's going on now, that was just the first session, Ms. Cannon, and they'll be... They're setting some dates for a second session as a follow-up. This process could take, you know, a few more months actually before, because it's basically a rewrite of the entire contract, which is quite long. Now, two years ago, I think it was two years ago or so, a new contract was put in place that called for a step plan. And that's entirely different than what the other union is. The other union did have a step plan, but the steps were frozen some years ago, and they have not come back.
And why did the personnel not receive a pay increase in two years?
That's a... They... And theirs, they have it set up that they work, and keep in mind, all of this is still up under negotiation, so I don't know exactly how much further I want to go with this conversation. But it is set up in there that they need certain training, and it's paid for by the county, and at the end of that, when they get done with it, they receive pay raises.
Guaranteed pay raises. That's the difference.
Employees are getting raises as we speak, you know, as they finish different courses and all of that. You would have to talk with Ms. Martin at HR on how many raises have been given recently to that particular body.
And, Ms. Cannon, keep in mind, this board has done a very good job of being frugal with spending, and it has afforded us the opportunity to provide raises for the other employees, the other local 630, 8... 630 or 860? 630. Um, I don't know why I'm 860, anyway. And, you know, they had went five years without any sort of a raise at one time. Some departments have went longer. Whenever this original contract that we were operating under was negotiated, this was a guaranteed raise for the Department of Public Safety, no matter if times were lean or times were good. We have been fortunate in the last three years that times have been good enough that we have been able to afford a small cost of living raise for everyone. But the Department of Public Safety's raise situation under the current contract is locked in. They would get that six percent or whatever it was every two years as long as they performed their training in classes, so... You're kind of comparing apples to oranges.
Okay. And... If it is correct that the department is carrying forward $2 million, and remember, I asked that last time, and it was confirmed that they do, and when I asked why, you told me that, well, they need equipment or other things, like when the vehicle had the accident on US 27, just as an example, and then the funds are available, that's how I like to operate at home, so I understand that. Nonetheless, I can't help but say that eight percent comes to $185,000, that that should be affordable out of the $2 million amount. Now, I also understand Rebecca said, "I'm not sure." Ms. Brown, please help me, what is a federal mediator?
What is a federal mediator?
Yes. If it came to that situation.
The union, if they come to impasse.
That's correct.
I'm not sure what you mean by what is a federal mediator.
I mean, what does that person do, what is that person's authority to do?
I do not do the union negotiations, I have to tell you, I don't represent the board, so I don't know the ins and outs of how far their authority goes. I don't know if we submit to arbitration and it's binding or not, is it binding?
Yes, ma'am.
No?
It doesn't matter.
Mr. Moody has much more experience with this than I do.
If we go to impasse with either union, if we can't meet somewhere along the way, and that's why it's called negotiations, you get the first demands and then you respond to it, and you can even put your own demands there, and it's a trade-off. You say, "Okay, here's what we want as the Board of County Commissioners, and here's what you're asking for." You know, there's costs on both sides. But if you come to an impasse, then there's a choice of an arbitrator. It can go to arbitration. The board can sit as the arbitrator, or you can bring in a totally arbitrator or a federal mediator. I think that step is a federal mediator. The union and our negotiation team can strike federal mediators until both sides agree to one. Then that person, and it's not binding, that person can make a ruling, but that's not binding. It can go from that then to arbitration, and even at that point, it's not binding. They can... The arbitrator can say, "Yes, you are due this, or we feel like that you are... You should get this amount." But again, it still comes back to the board for the final decision. Florida is a no-strike state.
No strike? You mean they cannot strike?
No striking unions.
Okay, okay. And why have a union on first?
It's... Ms. Cannon, it has worked well over the years. What the situation is now, in just my opinion, is at one time, we had strictly just EMS. Now, we're marrying EMS and fire. So now, you're talking about different certifications, different levels of training, different levels of pay. So you can have a paramedic firefighter of one, or you can have an EMT firefighter of one, that's called dual cert or dual certification. So a lot of that's in this, but I believe that the union and Mr. Knowles is actually having some emails going on right now about the step plan that we're talking about. There's a step plan in place, and like I say, people are continuing to get raises in that union. That's not part of this negotiation, that's the contract that is... We're under now.
Okay. Now, I... If I understand this correctly, there were major maintenance issues at several stations. May I know what kind of maintenance issues? Please?
Ms. Cannon, we have a... We have a mobile home at Rosewood that seemed to not be... That seems to be settled. And we sent Universal Engineering out there, they checked it, there's no sinkhole or nothing. They said, they said observe it for a little while, and when you think that that is settled, then we will have a mobile home company or something go out there and re-level it. So that's ongoing. Now, some, and I won't get into other things, but usually as soon as we are informed of a situation, whether it's at their station, or whether it's at 4H, or whether it's at the road department, if there's something that's putting our employees in harm's way, we act on it depending on the situation as fast as we need to work on it.
I'm delighted to hear that.
So, that's countywide, Ms. Cannon.
Okay, great. Where do the personnel live, where they are on duty? Are they at home and they just come out when they are called, or how does that work?
When they're on duty?
Yes.
They live at the stations, the EMS personnel.
Yeah, the county provides housing.
Right.
Well, you know, in Chiefman and Wilson, that site built, those are two site built. Those are site built, and the others are mobile homes. The one here in Johnson's a mobile home. The one in Inglis and Rosewood are both mobile homes.
And now, this one... Going to be uncomfortable to ask, but I'm going to do it. You know me, I can afford not to ask uncomfortable questions. To whom do the employees take their concerns?
There's a chain of command, they should take it to their immediate supervisor, and then their immediate supervisor would take it to the department head, and then the department head would bring it to the county coordinator, and then the coordinator would bring it to us if it needs to be, it cannot be settled. That's the same chain of command that all departments have.
Okay. Now, pictures that Mr. Moody, our county coordinator, figures he don't have to go to the board in his respective opinion.
Employees of this county, in my opinion, may vary with the other commissioners, are valued assets, and most of them are citizens. I am their representative as the county commissioner. My door is always open to hear their concerns. That's my policy.
I'm happy to hear that.
And one other thing, there is also agreements procedure.
That's one of my next questions.
If they don't... If they do it informally and don't get the resolution that they want, they have agreements procedure set out in the plan. Yes.
Because, believe it or not, when I worked for the state of Texas and applied to be an engineering technician, for which I had all the qualifications, I was told my accent was too heavy and it would upset the public to have to listen to me. And I hired an attorney, and that attorney, after filing agreements, and that attorney explained to them that they had violated the National Orange Code.
And I'm sorry that you live in Texas, Ms. Cannon, I'm glad you're in Florida.
I know. Okay. So, and one last thing, does this EMS personnel, do they have an attorney too?
They have a right to.
The union has an attorney.
They do?
Yes.
And who is paying their attorney?
The union pays their attorney, we don't pay.
That comes with their union dues and things like that, Ms. Cannon.
And the county, we pay for the county's attorney.
Out of my budget.
And he's not cheap.
I didn't figure he would be, but is he efficient?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Best I've ever worked with. Only one of everyone. Still the best.
I think too.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Grant?
Mr. Chairman, all due respect to Ms. Cannon, wouldn't this be a better conversation for her if I could employ him with David Knowles?
Well, I was just fixing to... I was just fixing to recommend that she come back to the office and get with me and Jacqueline Martin, and if David Knowles needs to come in, fine. But I think when she sees some of the things through HRs, she'll understand how it works.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. All right. Moving on. Is this me? Hey! It is my pleasure, I've known this gentleman even before my tenure as county commissioner, and he's always been a very likable person and a great representative of Levy County. He employs everything that Levy County's about, as well as a man who served a proud military service and career. If I may, I'm gonna read this letter that was from Rick Scott, and I actually saw the original, I do believe it was actually signed by Rick Scott. So he... Rick Scott has done something since he's been in office. Besides cut funding. "Dear Mr. Lowens, congratulations on being named the 2015 Veteran's Service Officer of the Year by the Florida Department of Veterans Affairs. Thank you also for answering the call to serve our country in the United States Marine Corps and as a law enforcement officer. As Floridians, support our veterans, our state demonstrates its commitment to being our country's most military-friendly state. As governor and a Navy veteran myself, I am committed to making sure Florida maintains that position. In addition to supporting the more than 1.5 million veterans in our state, we also applaud our active military and their families. Again, congratulations, and thank you for your commitment to serve your fellow veterans." So, Mr. Lowens, if you will come up, please. We have a nice plaque that was presented to you. And I'm sure you'll get some photos. You probably won't get Ms. Julie Anne, because I'm sure she does Mr. Work. This is the plaque that was presented to Mr. Lowens at the... At his conference. And then a certificate of appreciation. And the letter that was from the aforementioned Mr. Rick Scott, he was up. Thank you.
He only made one mistake, he joined the Marines.
Julie, would you want to come up and get a picture?
Sit down, Army.
Mr. Robert, come on, we gotta get a picture of the guy. Every day, you're a... You're a Veteran's Service Officer of the Year for the entire state of Florida. And you're the best one in the county. You have the best assistance in the county.
Absolutely. Folks, just let me make a statement. This award is humbling, for one thing, but it's not an individual award. We work with FDVA, the County Veteran's Service Association, American Legion, and all those folks work together, including my staff member right here, Julie Rose. One person cannot do what our office does. We brought in over $1,500,000 to the county last year in new benefits for veterans. So it's really impressive what all these folks do as a group rather than as one person. Right, Julie?
Yep.
Thank you again, Mr. Robert.
My pleasure.
Uh, next item of business is a request approval to adopt Resolution 2015-52, supporting proposals by Citrus County, Florida to improve and expand recreational facilities around the Cross Florida Barge Canal and surrounding areas. This was brought to my attention, I went to a meeting down in Inglis, talking about some improvements and things that we can do around Inglis. And one of the things that was brought forth by Commissioner Damato from Citrus County is they're gonna do a large expansion just across the Willa Koochi River, just across the county line on the Barge Canal. They're going to put in a boat ramp, build pavilions, and a bike path, walking path. The hope is that this could be an option for our residents in the southern part of the county to maybe alleviate some of the traffic that goes to the end of 40, that they have an alternative place to launch their boat, somewhat fresh water, you know, the Barge Canal's kind of brackish. And in addition to, the bike paths and the walking trails will connect with our park that's over at the locks off of CR 40. So it's kind of a combined effort for not only northern Citrus County, but also southern Levy County. And albeit, it is in the... It is not inside our... Totally inside our boundaries of our county, it is a good joint effort to work with Citrus County and support their effort, and it may be a possibility for some POT3 restore money, because those are going to be regional projects. And if you can show a regional value, if you will, of how it can support, you know, multiple counties, this would not only help Citrus County, it would help ours and Levy County, and it would be beneficial to the residents in the edge of Marion County around Dunellen. So I think it's a good thing, but in order to get approval, it has to come before the board, so... Does anybody have any questions? Concerns? Ms... Tony, sorry.
Sorry. That's okay. I'm very hard to forget, but that's okay. Any plans in there to complete the Nature Trail from Chieflin down to the Willa Koochi?
Not at this time, not with this.
No discussion about it?
There was some... There was some discussion with some folks from DOT.
Okay.
That's gonna be a different funding source. This really... The first phases of this, Citrus County's gonna do on their own. It's the expansion is where they need the help. You know, going... They're gonna take the trail all the way into Dunellen, along 40, and then they want to go up, obviously up to connect to the Nature Coast Trail in Chieflin, that is their final stages. But right now, the original part of it is gonna be the construction of the boat ramp and the parking area on 40, and then obviously the construction, they're gonna have to do some pretty major road work, you know, where you can get access to this property there, because it's right at the bridge going over the Barge Canal. Ms. Merritt and Ms. Whitepeace were also at the meeting, they may have some light, some they want to shed on it that maybe I didn't take away, I mean...
The hope is eventually that the trail will connect from Dunellen all the way through Citrus, Levy, southern Levy County, and then north Citrus County. And it could have a 50,000-person impact of visitors to the south end of Levy County once this is completed, which is a pretty good economic driver in the south end of the county.
Mr. Damato did a... Commissioner Damato did a great job, he had a very nice layout of what the, you know, the phase one is going to be, and then what the future phases are. But there are gonna be places for people to have access to the water, they don't have a boat, so they can fish. There are gonna be docks and pavilions. And it's a... Seems like a very good project.
Did he give you any indication of the cooperation of the surrounding property owners?
The property that they're utilizing is they have in their possession.
Ah, that's good. There you go. Because they're not real friendly. Putting it away.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, ma'am. We have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-52, a motion by Commissioner Rooks and a second by Commissioner Rockmeeks. Is there any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Our Parks and Recreation Director's gonna be involved, is he not?
He will be whenever they connect into our county, I mean, I can't let him oversee their project, but I'm sure that...
Can't he just like sit on it and make recommendations? You're talking about county of 40, and that's his bail.
Well, that's whenever it comes into the county.
It's not the county of 40.
This part is on their... On their side. This first phase, they're just looking for support, so that later on, as we go forth with our... Of course, he'll be involved whenever they come into the county, but...
But, no, no, anything on 40 is...
They're looking for support now so that they can move forward and hopefully put together a project, a regional project for POT3. We have a motion of second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Haven Hospice, Ms. Howard? Okay, thought so. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Anita Howard, I'm the administrator at Haven Hospice, and today, on behalf of Haven Hospice, I ask the county commissioners to proclaim November as National Hospice and County Medicare Month. We're doing this to recognize that our community needs support for end-of-life care and grief and counseling. In 2014, we served over 5,700 people with end-of-life care needs, and almost 8,000 people with grief and counseling support, and we want to continue that into 2015 and 2016. And November is our month to get the education out for the services that we provide.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Rooks.
Sir.
We have a second by Commissioner Joyner, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Before you go, can you give us a brief update on how the event went?
The event went... We do not have our tally in for the Putnam Lodge, the Putnam Lodge, but it was very successful. We had about 250 people attend, and we had a silent auction that I know that it generated a lot of revenue, so I can connect my six month review of all of it. I've been money generating, but it...
You all needed some of that work there.
I tried.
Thank you. Nature Coast Business Development Council, Mr. David Peckley. David got the memo of the job.
Good morning, Alfred. Good morning. First order of business is to, I guess, formally approve the 2015-2016 fiscal year budget for the... Or contracts, excuse me, for the Nature Coast Business Development Council. Pretty much is the same as, you know, the year passed, with the exception being that there was a slight increase because of medical expenses, which I think everybody is pretty much going through. But the amount, I believe, is $159,700, so it's not too much of an increase. Other than that, it's really the same as the last three years, this being the fourth year that I've gone through this with y'all, so I don't want to take more time than a halftime test, but certainly we would like to get this signature.
I'm looking to motion approve 2015-16, that is contract from Levy County, County of Business Development Council.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Joyner, a second by Commissioner Rockmeeks, is there any further... There's a motion by Commissioner Joyner, a second by Commissioner Rupp Meeks, is there any further discussion? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Tony.
May I make a request that on your filing with the Secretary of State, that the Nature Case Business Development Council, Inc., identify all of your directors as opposed to just two?
That's right.
With your filing after the first three years?
Which is coming up.
All right, any further discussion?
How many directors are there?
Nine currently. One just retired, so it's technically a, that position will be filled, and that has to be appointed by the county commissioner, at least approved by the county commissioner.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? No, obviously not. All favor, please signify by saying aye.
No.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Second part is the progress report for the last couple of months. To, I guess, steal from Director McDonald's, kind of, I feel like we're in the middle of an economic El Nino. The, you know, having a perfect storm coming up, because we've had, obviously, we've discussed and have worked extensively on the incentives programs, which will be discussed and finalized next month. Ms. Annie and myself have been working on that, getting the fine tuning done. There's been a lot of movement. I said last week that this will be my busiest year I've seen since I started in two thousand and eleven. Already, not even two weeks in, and the activity level has increased significantly. There are a few projects that I'm working on right now. Because confidentiality has been waived, I get to talk to, about them a little bit more than we usually can in economic development. There's an announcement tomorrow, actually, for a planned veterans and first responders retreat in Levy County. This is certainly one of those projects, you know, you always love every, you know, every job that you get, every business that comes in or expands is a huge success, but this is one of those opportunities where it's something to really, really be proud of, and certainly stand behind because of what it represents. It's for the, those that have come back from, you know, either World War II or Afghanistan, Iraq, you name it, all the conflicts throughout history, to have a place to recover, to regroup, to just recharge, get back into, obviously, one of the biggest challenges is you're over on an extended tour or whatever, and just get reacclimated to normal civilian life. And the psychological part, which I think we always, it seems, fall behind in this country, not just military, but in general, it seems the PTSD and things of that nature are always kind of a secondary, you know, goal of ours or objective. And so this is one of those things that would, I think, significantly address. What you would look at is having a place for people, not just veterans and first responders, but for families, to enjoy a natural surrounding where they can kayak, they can fish, they can maybe have a major trail to jog or hike or whatever. You're going to have, what is planned is you're going to have therapists that would obviously help, because some of these pieces of equipment would have to be obviously retrofitted, if you will, because you're going to be dealing with some individuals with some serious injuries, disabilities. And so it's going to be multifaceted projects. It's going to be day use only right now, so you're not talking having cabins, but that's actually being looked at, because the drive is to get people from all over the country, and follow them over the area, and obviously get what they need out of this location, therapy, whatever that might be. And so it would be a shame to kind of have them go away after their day. They might want to stay for extended periods of time, and so that's one of those things that we're kind of kicking around right now. But what we're looking at is down, actually near Gulf County, right off of nineteen. And so tomorrow night at seven o'clock in Citrus Hills, because of the location of the business owner who lives behind this, we're going to make an announcement about this planned project. Met with DEP, which is the, I don't know, the Department of Environmental Protection up in Live Oak Friday, and we also met with the Suwannee River Water Management District. I know it's very preliminary, but the thing that I said with one of the developers is you want to be proactive, you want to make sure that there's no unforeseen circumstances or surprises. The zoning and everything that exists at this property would conform to what they're planning for the use. The only caveat being, you know, are they going to add lodging or things of that nature? So very exciting project. There's another one, which is referred, that, by the way, is what was referred to as Project Solace on your, on your status sheets. There's another one, which is Project Correlated, that is still moving forward. We've had multiple discussions. Again, another one of those projects that was not in existing was a newcomer to the area, was looking at property in Levy. We are looking at two specific sites, one in Williston, one in Inglos. That would be a hundred-plus job project, where, and it's a, both indoor shooting range. Where we're at right now is, I guess you can still say the site selection, kind of finalizing the business plans and things of that nature. One thing that you can take out of this, when you go back to Project Solace, the veterans retreat, there was an opportunity to go elsewhere. There were some other states even being looked at, from memory, South Carolina and Alabama. The reason why we were picked as the site for this was because we actually were receptive and sat down. There were others that apparently, in the initial phone conversations, whatever, wanted all the information out, out the table from the get-go, and that isn't exactly the greatest way of doing business. The whole point is to get them in the door and then see what it's all about. You don't want to, you know, scare them off. Yeah, it's like, you know, like a overzealous car salesman or whatever, just kind of let it, you know, take, you know, take flight on its own. And so we had that opportunity, and the discussions have been very positive. Is this a sure thing? No. I've yet to find a sure thing in this business, but it's one of those that it's more likely than not that it is going to happen, and I will do everything I can, and our office for that matter, will do everything we can to make sure this does happen. So, and, and we're already at a good start. Having that meeting last week, it just so happened that there was a current military, currently active military member with DEP who was a wealth of knowledge, and so they will have a sit-down, this individual will have a sit-down with this developer, and give his insight as to what features could possibly be at this location, so. There's been a lot of things. I'm really excited and really proud because of what you all have allowed us to do and accomplish, and what it looks like we're about to accomplish this fiscal year and beyond. So thank you for all of that. And I don't want to take any more time unless you have any questions, but I certainly will come back to you when there's updates to be had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, do you have a proposal date for the application, going to be ready for the tax break on the new existing business, or?
Well, we've got that workshop next month, and...
Do we actually have the public here?
Yeah, we got the public here, and so that will be the final stamp of approval, I guess, if you want to put that forward, so. Yep. And in the meantime, like I've said before, I've been meeting with those. This, these two projects are one of the examples where they've been given the draft form, and neither are at the point where we're ready to process, but certainly we're keeping that process going forward. Both would apply in one fashion or another based on the preliminary discussions and how the applications spell out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Pastor Carnegie from the Vision Christian Academy.
Say good morning.
Good morning.
It's the same request. As I look on the form, this, that's a big, that's a academy, that's why I made concern for tenderness, but also concerned for people, community, getting to the recreation area. That goes for the church, but it's still open to the community. That's still one of the concerns, and same with the risks, it's increasing from the last time I've been up here, talked about it. It's getting worse, traffic is increasing. We got more students now actually walking to school, ride bicycles. They still got to get in the ditch and go attract them, so it's not getting any better out there where we are in Raleigh. It's getting pretty much worse. We're hoping we express that something would be done. I know the last time you said something about some funding coming through DOT and all of these forms, but...
Mr. Greenly had applied for that. He's not here this morning to ask if he applied again this year for a Safe Routes to School program?
Actually, actually, what was applied for before, they needed to make some amendments to it, and the person, Barney Burnett, Bert Bennett? Has kept it and has put it on file, and next time they accept applications, then it's going to be in there with them. So it's going to fall under the Safe Route to Kids to School.
In addition to, the consultant is here today, and we're going to go to lunch, we're going to ride through Raleigh and look at the situation to see if there's an alternative source of funding like we discussed before, with maybe a trail system, interactive trail that would encompass the route to school as well as the rest of the community.
And I'm not against the board, just to say things out, but I keep hearing a lot of things. Now, I'm not too familiar with these, but I hear a lot of crews and stuff that's coming through the system too. But we've been coming here for the last three, four years. It ain't just my first time being up here. And it's the same thing, we keep hearing over and over and over again. I'm not against the board, for whatever reason, seems like, I'm not sure what's going on, but it's lacking just too much delays on what we've been requesting. Very little has been done in the Raleigh area at all, or anything. And we thought it was kind of minor, in a sense, to request such a small thing. It's not a major expense, from what I keep hearing, but other expenses kind of involve things.
Can you give me an example?
Example of?
One of these expenses that you're hearing that were approved?
I'm just, some of this was repeated just this morning. I'm just sitting listening, and I'm seeing what we've been requesting for the last three, four years, very minor. It's not, but it's not even a mile. It's nowhere close to that long. It's in an area where there is danger, it's not a, it's not the recreation of these lives that we're talking about, these are families, these, these people we're talking about, that, their children, there's some adults, their families are in our area, and that's a constant thing about trying to make a place safe for them. It's not personal with me, it's about the community that we're in.
Yes, sir. And I understand that, and I'm, I'm working as diligently as I can to get you all fast forwarded. I've been waiting on a sidewalk at Bronson High School since I've been elected, and I keep getting delayed. So if there was, you know, if there was any sort of, anything going on that wasn't only up and up, we'd already have my sidewalk in Bronson. I mean, there's unfortunate, there's channels that you have to work through. We don't have the money to lay out for a forty thousand dollar sidewalk project, potentially, because what it does is opens up the floodgates for many other communities and many other places looking for assistance and looking for a sidewalk. We're not stalling you, by no means. What we are trying to do is we're trying to work within our means and get you what you need and do it at minimal cost to all the taxpayers in the county. It's not a, it's not that we don't, that your request is falling from deaf ears, believe me. The director of your school, Mr. Delaney, is a mentor to me, he's a role model in my life. I'd do anything in the world I could do to help him, but I can't justify spending money on a sidewalk whenever there's alternative funding that is out there that would be at minimal cost to the taxpayers in the county. So, I don't know, I don't know what else I can do. But we, we work, the wheels are going, they're very slow.
Um, just so that I got a better understanding of, are you, where are they going to cross the street at? Are they going to cross the street down at the stop sign, to walk down the outside of the road? Or are they walking? How is your?
They're coming down the north side.
And then cross right in front of the school?
Front of the school in front of the recreation area.
Like a crosswalk?
Yes, I mean, that's, something, a crosswalk there in front of the school. That's, okay.
Right.
And in that crosswalk, is that, there going to be somebody there every day, stop traffic, get them across the street? Every day?
If it's a, if it costs for that, I mean, that would be no problem to have someone there. You take that, the main thing is getting you off the road.
Signage and signage can do some of that, in the hours of the school's not, you know, that's, that's obviously another concern, is giving people, you know, access to the recreation area that's provided in the school. So, I mean, the problem is the number of sidewalks, you know, and then the potential for, the engineering and the potential for land acquisition, that's another problem that Bruce and I have discussed on more than one occasion, is that we're not confident there's enough land between the edge of the road and the property to have a sidewalk, you know, I mean, are we going to have to purchase land from some of those folks along there, are they going to donate the land? How's that going to work? You can't just put a sidewalk on the edge of the road, you have to have...
They're not going to take the measurements for that, they're giving up rooms for that.
Okay.
They determined, nothing wider than, I think, a five foot, I think that was discussing, is Mr. Greenly, the president, that they come out and took the measurements, and did it got for his mills engineering? And some reason it didn't, something else happened with mills engineering or something?
My understanding is whenever we got to the engineering, to, whenever we took the measurements, they weren't going to fit, and then we were going to have to come back and figure something else out. That's where, where I was left to understand where things were at. And I ain't filling Bruce under the bus, Bruce does a good job. But we were going to seek an alternative route, an alternative option. And that's what we're working on now, that something that can be done speedier than the Safe Routes to School program.
Mr. Chair, I can, I'll get with Mr. Greenly and see if anything is actually being engineered out, because from what I remember, we had talked both about a sidewalk and/or a bike track. And there was some issues with the material, whether it's concrete sidewalk, if there's going to be, if you use asphalt, and yes, we have went through some expense with Mr. Mills and all looking at that. And there was some intersection issues with DOT and their right of way, and then the county's right of way. But I will get with him, find out just exactly where we had, and we'll bring it back to November before.
See, after the meeting today. Get up and speak on what you, for the number of...
For the DOT part, what we was requesting was not to interfere with DOT, even at the county side. I mean, you bring DOT if you want to, that's what I would request from DOT, because we had said before, it may take other measures if DOT involved. So let's try to keep it on this side.
And that's, that's why it needs to be engineered out, because you've got two commercial establishments on each side of the county road, and I don't know how for DOT encroaches onto that, and then people's going to be crossing those commercial establishments to get there. So I'll, I'll get with Mr. Greenly and see just what actually has been laid out for plan, and see where it is with Mr. Barney Bennett, or anything else to that effect. Well, I'll bring it back, or we can get together sooner. I can get Mr. Greenly in, and if we have to meet at Levy's office, we can do whatever. Just get with me sometime later today or tomorrow, and we'll, we'll see what we got. If we have to bring something back to them, we'll bring it back next week.
In the meantime, you see y'all coming out this afternoon?
Yes. Shall we be at the school?
I am, yes.
We'll stop by and see. All right?
All right.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment on, can I make a comment on what he was saying?
Yes, sir. Please say your name for the record.
Al Carnegie, senior. The only thing I was mostly concerned with in that area when we get ready to vote, and the older people walked down to vote, and I've seen it so many times, and there, the cars are coming. And I would advise some of you all sometime, just to sit out there, the ones that are out there that are running the booth and stuff, they, I'm quite sure they have seen it. And I even caught myself doing it, coming from Whitehurst side, coming on in, and forget, it's the voting day. And kind of speeding, and people got to run, but if it's done some kind of little walkway, if you can see them, there'll be a lot of difference than they walking right downside that road. And, and, and it's dangerous. And think about the ones that are not familiar with this area, and they're coming. And some of them old people...
And the block trucks that can't get over it.
Some of them old people stepped to the side, trying to not walk in, and it hit them. That's my concern, just about the voting situation.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What happens if one of our kids get killed on the side of that road? Who is responsible for that?
Whoever hit them.
Do you think? Even though it is an established school?
Ma'am, I'll take you after this meeting to Bronson High School and Elementary School, where the kids walk across that school, walk across that road every day, where the designated fire escape is to go to the baseball field, and those children have to walk. I, I'm not being callous, I, I feel your pain. I mean, I know people who go to that school. Again, Mr. Delaney, who is one of the administrators there, is a very good friend of mine. Anything I can do to help... Anything I can do to help, I, I'm willing to do, but I can't stroke a check.
Where does the funding come from? Is there anybody we can write? Is there anybody?
You can write, uh, you can write to your state representative. You can write to DOT, the, the office in Lake City. You can write to, you can write to the governor. I mean, you can write, you know, get the school board involved. Um, even though they're not public school students, it's still a school matter. You know, we need some safe route to school funding in this county desperately and, and not only our public schools, but in our private schools.
Right.
Uh, anybody that, that has a voice in, in Tallahassee is someone you should appeal to.
Right. Okay. And what time will you be coming out for Raleigh approximately?
Sometime after this meeting, eleven thirty. I don't know, it's not long meetings. Sometime around lunch. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanna say that was something I was gonna bring out was the church. We do use that church for a voting place. And the safety definitely would be great. I know you're, you guys are working towards this, but they have been very generous to allow us to use that polling place. And I can't thank them enough for all the years, many, many years we've been using that. And it was a huge improvement from what we went to prior. So any help we can give them would definitely be beneficial to our voters too, election day. But it looks like you guys are, you know, so much you can do, but I just wanted to point out that they have been a huge help to us, um, the voters of Leavy County as well, so.
Okay, the first item I have for you today is, uh, a request approval of a funding agreement for the provision of mental health and substance abuse services between Leavy County and Meridian to have your help here incorporated. Uh, during the budget session, it was agreed that the county, uh, will provide funding for the provision of general mental health and substance abuse services, including Baker Act services to the citizens of Leavy County. The commission elected to provide seventy-five thousand dollars under this agreement for its portion of the local national statute of search warrant statute three ninety-four point seventy-six. Uh, the release of such funds is in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars per tour.
It's a pleasure, the board.
I'm making, I'm second.
Your motion to approve by Commissioner Rooks, a second by Commissioner Joyner. Is there any further discussion?
A few years ago, this dollar amount, of course, not that high. I know that they had been asking for years for us to increase the allotments of those funds to them. And I guess this fell through the cracks with me cause I didn't realize it would, had increased that to this dollar amount. And I'm just certainly not comfortable with that dollar amount. I've got some issues with them. I understand that they do the Baker Acts and stuff like that. There's a lot of things that's tied in to the Meridian and their funding, on all of their funding, cause it even goes back to when Mr. Rook was here. There was a lot of issues being talked about and they're funding millions of dollars towards, uh, buildings, office staff. And we had asked several times for different things and, and as far as I can remember, we've never gotten anything back other than we're doing the right thing with the funds. And I just have a hard time in giving this dollar amount knowing that they, that this ties to other things with Meridian. Even though I understand they do a good job and I know the sheriff has made comments in years past and about them helping us, I'm three hundred and ten percent with that. And I understand that every year that they criticize us for not paying what they seem to be a deemed fit. I mean, there was letters going back and forth with their attorney. You will pay this and all this and that for the statute that, that, and it's technically not right. They're supposed to be seeking other sources of income instead of coming to us, but they do anyway and we do give them money. I just haven't. Y'all, y'all make y'all's vote and I'll make mine.
Is this an increase to value of what we gave them last year or is this the same amount?
I know what two years ago, we was right at fifty or fifty-four.
Yeah, we were at fifty and, but when, when they came and made presentations about the per capita and the, what, thirteen counties that they serve, our county was lagging behind on the per capita, but, uh, that was the stance that the board took was the amounts that we've approved in years. This was approved in a budget workshop. Whether we can go back and say, well, we hope to really, uh.
I don't remember agreeing to an increase until we were going through the budget. That's what makes me think this is already the amount that we had agreed to.
And it may be, cause we didn't increase many budgets at all.
Can we take this for a minute and get somebody to ask Mr.?
Yeah. See, Douglas was here as serving as one of their board members and I think it was encouraged that we should give them more than what we had already allotted. And like I said, this could be the second year of this, but I'm, for some, some reason in my mind, within a couple of years, I, I, I've got a dollar amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars.
And I, I, I concur with that, but I, I believe that the increase was made in not this budget, not this past budget year, but the one before, I think. I don't, I, it seems like this wasn't an, an increase in this budget. It was an increase in the previous one.
Yeah.
I'm not, well, I'm not saying you dropped the ball, boss. I'm just saying that, uh, and I agree, I mean, with, with what you said as far as, you know, it, it does clearly state in the statute that they should seek funding from local sources, but I don't see them going out and, and soliciting any of the municipalities or anybody like that. They just come to us and say, you gotta pay us. And that, that's not what the statute says.
But. Do you want to tell the board, in, in the one case that has dealt with that statute, which I, I can't say, I think it was decided correctly, but it did come down on the side of the mental health provider in interpreting that statute. Of course, in the county, they did not appeal it. So it was just a local court, uh, down in Love County, but that's out there.
He didn't give one up term, but, you know, there again, I mean, I understand the appeals process and probably what somebody should have done, and that's fine. But there again, it's made different than the, uh, medical examiner. When was it? Last year, the year before, they stood up here and said, you're gonna have to ask for increases in funds called the building to some home, there's gonna have to pay for it. Really? Anyway, I, I just got.
Uh, Commissioner Stevens, in fourteen, it was fifty thousand. In fifteen, it jumped to seventy-five thousand. And this year, it is still at seventy-five thousand.
So I did drop the ball.
And Commissioner Stevens, I'm gonna say you did drop the ball. Because everything, and a lot of my books are different because if we want the Meridian and Baker Act and having that facility and maybe they are charging us too much, maybe we need to ask where some of the money is going. Or we do need, uh, maybe, but we absolutely Meridian does, I'll tell you what, if we want the, the Baker Act part and the Meridian, a man out back there did not keep people on the road.
I, I, I agree with the Ba- Baker Act part. I just disagree with.
The two and a half million dollar facility they built, whether or not.
Yes.
Okay.
If I'm right.
And you know, that's fine, but I, I just got, I just wanna make sure that if we're giving them this dollar amount, that it's actually going to where it's supposed to go and not thumbing through somewhere else, I think. And, and the Baker Act and parts of what the sheriff has to deal with, it can get the crumbs off of it.
Being utilized in Leavy County.
Yeah. Commissioner, I think that the, the part that come up and the clerk's not here, but, uh, I think Yanah Dobbins uses those services quite a bit up there and, and had a good report on. They had some issues in years past, but it improved. The sheriff has had seen improvements in them through the Baker Act and other things. And I think that's what brought us to the seventy-five last year and we maintain that this year. But I believe that's the two that uses it the most is the juvenile area or whatever area it is that Yanah uses them for sure.
Well, see, Don, with that, they have, when they go up and at the end of them, they have to go up there to get the marchman's act. Get the marcher, that's, that's marchman's act. And then they have to have them here before a jury. And they have, I mean, I can, I can understand the process they have to go through, but I agree with you. We need to know where all the money is going, but they do have, need to keep status quo with Baker Acts and Meridian. Because not only just they, they do what the sheriff pays them to, they have to do what the jury tells them to do too when they, when they, uh, put in for a marchman.
There's, there's annual reports. If they hear us, but you can never go through it all. It comes with this flat volume. And they go from Hamilton County and then to Stark County, they're all different, so.
Ms. Cannon.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that the Leavy County Legislative Declaration hearing is coming on, but maybe the county could, uh, takes this problem to the representatives of, of the state that represent us and to request the state to be amended to where most and foremost any funds given by this county and the other twelve in their service area be first and foremost spent on health issues, other data and other ones. And not on administrative costs and two and a half million dollar buildings.
With a thousand square foot office.
Nothing you said.
Were you a check divener or something?
Yeah, you know, this guy works there.
I would.
And they get paid, they get paid handsomely to be a maintenance guy.
I think they've either redone the state statutes where it's so hard, had a lot of harder on y'all now. But they've redone the state statute, right, am I correct?
Just to put my two cents worth in, since I hear my title thrown around in there. My biggest disappointment with Meridian as we speak is sometimes their services to the jail. They do provide services to our inmates at the jail. Sometimes those are delayed and that bothers me. However, with the Baker Act, Marchman Act, um, it's, it's almost daily. Uh, you know, if I was, uh, getting out of my car to come in here, I'm listening right then, uh, to a radio transmission of a mentally ill person that's just committed an aggravated assault on somebody. We're sending folks to that. Uh, so it, it's, it's every day. It's basically every day between us, the police departments and all of it. And, and I do remember the day, uh, back when I was the number two guy, that we've actually taken, uh, people to be Baker Act and there were no beds. So that is one plus maybe from a new building that where all that money was spent properly to get the beds. That's been an argument of mine in the past, that maybe too much administrative stuff and not enough beds, but, you know, I have no control over that. But we do not have that problem. Uh, we haven't had that problem since I've been sheriff as far as not having a bed to take someone to. So that has improved. Uh, they do provide a viable service, whether it's, you know, the dollar is equal to that service. I, I don't know. I can't answer that. They do provide us a service that I don't know what we would do, uh, without the, uh, Baker Act and Marchman Act.
All right. Anybody else for discussion? Put to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
What did Mr. Stevens say, Pete?
He said that he voted with us.
I am happy to be in.
But maybe I wasn't voting, huh? All right. So the motion carried unanimously for the record.
Okay, thank you. Second item I have is that the county has had various impact fees since two thousand and five. And later in two thousand and eight, uh, we adopted a school impact fee. Uh, it is time to revisit those and, uh, I'm asking for a couple of dates for a workshop for y'all to have a workshop on the impact fees that we have as well as, uh, and, and that the parks, you know, the, the impact fee, the parks and recreation is not projected to go up or to increase, nor is the impact fee for emergency medical services. However, the road impact fees that we have under the methodology of this study, uh, this, this has been going on, building up to this point now for about two years to get to this point. Uh, there would be some increases in the road impact fee as well as a new fire impact fee now that we in the fire business for facilities and things like that, which, uh, is part of this study also. So I was, uh, the two consultants, uh, neighbors Giblin, uh, was available and Duncan and Associates has done the, uh, roads and fire impact fee part update, uh, are available November third, uh, at, you know, eleven AM or later, or December the eighth at eleven AM or later.
Don, we already have workshops scheduled for the third of November?
Polity.
What time, what time is that?
Nine AM or whenever the board.
Right.
So nine AM. Pardon?
The third would work. Yes, ma'am. It would still work, yeah. Now, I, I just put eleven AM or as soon as available. I could be going P M depending on how the agenda sets up like that. I would ask that if it fits y'all's schedule, that we do try to work it in November the third, cause this is just the workshop as to what will eventually go to a public hearing with the new ordinance, submitting the current ordinance that we have.
I'll find it.
Either the ore looks for me.
Okay.
Then I'll schedule it for November the third, eleven AM or later.
Later for y'all?
I'm content.
All right. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cannon.
Mr. Chairman, those impact fees that Mr. Moody is talking about, does, are that the ones that we have the assessments on?
None. Impact fees are for new development, new development, uh.
I'm just wondering, you're done? Sure. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am.
The board willing, I'll be at the book, so.
I'm sure, I'm counting. Thank you. Mr. Dean.
All right. Need to request approval from the board to get the chairman to sign a grant for rural development in the town of English, uh, for addition of, uh, May as a fire station.
Can put in for all or?
Block grant, I'll make a motion.
To support, to a letter of support.
Motion by Commissioner Joyner, signed by Commissioner Rockeeks. Is there any further discussion? Law in favor?
Aye.
This is a by saying aye, opposed, motion carries.
Also needs the board's approvals, uh, to waive the tidying fees for the city of Williston for a cleanup that is scheduled for this coming, uh, Saturday. It's, uh, exactly the same as been done in other communities and, uh, it's just being waived, taking things for cleanup.
They got a couple of them.
They're having a cleanup.
All right. Sorry. I can't, hard to be, we got three to.
Mr. Lippman, welcome. Uh, you have anything you'd like to add to this? I'm sure it's not gonna be a problem, but if you can lobby us a little bit, make us feel like we're doing something.
Worth, worth the extra effort.
I'm making much of the way to think.
Uh, kinda slow in the draw. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones. Your only luck. Put them on our way if you want.
Do you think they're waiting for them over here or put them here?
You always hold them up like it's in the time to wait, between rounds or boxing. She's got these fancy easels. No, man, so that you put, you're doing fancy paintings. Yes.
Please open the crook and check.
I was playing, yeah, you explained to my child. Why don't you just put the one on the one you already got set?
Everybody see? I'm here today to, um, discuss with you guys the possibility of changing some of our precinct lines. Not our phone locations, but some of the lines. I've had several complaints over the last couple of years, uh, voters having to travel quite a distance to their phone places. And I can't go any further without, you know, making these changes. It's my job to see rush elections to make it more convenient for voters. And by doing this, I really feel confident that we are helping people get out and move, uh, if they do choose a good election day. To point out a couple areas, um, if you look at the map, the current map to your left, you'll see we're increasing eight dips down right here. We have taken this whole area and brought this into Morrison, which is the Morrison Baptist Church. Right across the road, right now, as it currently stands, people cannot vote at Morrison. They have to go all the way up to Morrison and vote at faith Baptist. I've had a lot of complaints in this area here. The other second big complaint has been faith Baptist Tavernacle. Those people live right in these subdivisions right here by the church and they have to go all the way up here to Raleigh. So we have incorporated in the proposed map, we have brought in, um, this area here. It actually used to be, this area that comes, comes out here, this used to be precinct two during redistricting in twenty twelve. That got moved to eleven, so I proposed to move it back. I think we, um, I have a G.I.S mapping system and we checked the calculation of the mileage and it actually.
We had one of those too, don't we, Shannon? Oh, from that.
And ours, ours is specifically for, you know.
Ours, ours is nice.
Geocoding our voters and such. Um, there's a couple of areas, there's a couple of other areas now. Um, we had an issue up here with a family, one family that lived in Otter Creek and headed all the way to Cedar Peak. So we want to move them, that green area right here that got brought into the proposed map, and now we just have to go to Gulf Hamid.
We don't vote on our creek, yeah, we don't vote on our creek.
No, we, we, um, there was less than a hundred people that voted at that polling place. So it was worth our while to combine those two precincts.
My first election, I actually won on the creek. That was the only one I won, but anyways. Ms. Cannon.
Mr. Chairman, I can't forbear, I mean. I understand what Miss Tammy is saying, I understand what the voters are saying, but what I want the people to understand that it's a privilege to be allowed to vote.
Right.
Period.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
But I, I can, where you said there in, uh, precinct two, I happened to be at that faith Baptist Tavernacle.
When you, when you ran?
When I ran, and a gentleman came up there and said, I just wanted there to vote and they told me that I gotta go to Raleigh. He's like, I can see my house from where we're talking. He's like, I'm not voting, I was like, man, I sure wish you would, so anyway.
If you look, if you look at the map, the polling place, I would say that is a little star showing you that it might even increase. So that's, that's a problem, you know, and I feel, like I said, it's my job to make sure it's, I, I can't fix everybody, I can't fix it overnight. Obviously, I listen to the voters, if there's any future complaints, I do need board approval to make this change. I researched it over the past two years since being elected and I feel like this is the best change as we can make. Uh, I've incorporated cities in Williston, um, the airport was not included in, um, and the people around the airport were not included in precinct seven. I did bring Williston all in one polling place, I think it's less confusing for the voters. The only municipality was not able to get all into one polling place was Bronson. And the reason why is because the X center, if I incorporate all the city of Bronson into three, then the polling place would not be sitting in its, um.
Always Bronson.
Precinct. Uh, I wanted to do that because for city elections, the city of Bronson votes at W. Cobb. But then for county elections, the people that fall within the city but are precinct one, they have to go to X center. But they've been doing it now since twenty twelve, so I really, um, don't feel comfortable really touching that right now. There was a lot of voter confusion in twenty twelve when we split that, because people had voted at the W. Cobb for their whole lifetime. So that wasn't a big change and I would be, so, I, I want to do it just simply because it makes sense, but I don't want more voter confusion. And in addition, we will be mailing out cards, um, if approved. In November, we have, um, special envelopes we have made. There's a huge button on the envelope that says your precinct has changed. And the hope of that is that people will not think it's junk mail and that they'll actually open it up and see, you know, that the precinct has changed.
Rock and I can understand where you're coming from, because people that voted Marching Baptist Church live across forty-one to Marching Baptist Church, but have to drive to Williston to vote.
Yeah.
They, they're pulling out of the driveway looking at the church and that's good too. I mean, I think it's a great idea, Tammy, and I'll make a motion to approve it on my part.
I'll say it. There was a motion by Commissioner Jordan, a second by Commissioner Rock Meeks, is there any further discussion? Mr. Sheffield.
By any chance, the arguing up in Tallahassee about redistricting, will it affect this if there's changes?
Um, every map that I've looked at, it does not split Lady County, congressional senate, or house. Right now, Lady County, we're, we're not split. And all the current maps that are proposed are, do not look like will be effective. Worst case, if we do get split somehow, we can always do a split precinct. So let's say, for example, we have two house districts and the line falls here. You know, there'll be two different precincts, but they'll vote at the same polling place, so we won't change people's polling place by that split. So, no matter what, I hope to keep the precinct lines intact no matter what happens.
It'd be like old Bronson was, with two, like, two people.
Yeah.
Both of them's voted.
Right, there was a time that we were split.
Barker Creek was that way too.
Bronson used to be one of fourteen, Williston was two of fifteen, three seventeen in Otter Creek.
That's right, Bronson's one and that's two. You heard that?
I, I can't guarantee it, but I feel pretty confident that that's not gonna happen. So I might come back, I hope it's not.
Ms. Cannon.
Is this going to have a fiscal impact on anything?
Just the mailing of the cards, um, the cost of the envelopes and the postage, it's about, oh, by the way, I forgot to mention, it's about, um, I did, I did exact calculations this morning, I told, um, about a thousand, but it actually affects exactly thirteen hundred and thirteen people. But that's families, so that's not households, that's exactly individual voters. But we are actually gonna send individual envelopes to each voter, not households. So they are well aware that, you know, this, it pertains to them. And also, we do sample ballots every year, right? This year, we are gonna incorporate a voter information card in everyone's sample ballot with their polling place on it. So it's not gonna cost me anymore to do it, maybe a little bit more for the type of paper I get, but the mail out gets done anyways with our samples. So everyone's gonna always get a new card with a sample ballot, that's gonna be standard. It's actually called an information card, um, now, you know, you have to ship it your signature I.D. like you have for many of yours. But still, I think it'd be a good idea to have it in the sample ballot, so the person polling place is included on that, so there's never any question about where they can vote.
And as a reminder, we get a warm-up election this year too, so give the president a perfect.
Yes, we have a March election.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, Mr. Witt.
You said you were combining some polling places like Williston, combining the precincts.
In twenty twelve, they were done. We, um, Otter Creek, we used to get polling place and that was combined with Gulf Hamid. So now, everybody that voted in Otter Creek precinct now votes at Gulf Hamid, that, that happened actually in twenty twelve.
Our votes absentee.
And Fowlers Bluff was closed down in twenty twelve too, and they had, they had to go up to, um, the Williston precinct. Because there was probably about thirty people voting in that election day. I mean, it's quite expensive, because you pay the poll workers and the special ballot styles and a lot of costs and to have it in polling places. So we, we did combine a couple precincts.
I think just split Bronson in half though.
We did split Bronson in half in twenty twelve.
Because they're long lines.
Yes, it was a huge improvement splitting Bronson. I think, I think it's really helped a lot.
All Bronson's very good.
And, you know, we did tell voters that were upset about the, the changes, you know, you always get early vote and absentee vote. But it's still in my heart, I think it's the right thing to do to move them where, because I do want to vote election day, so why take that privilege away from it?
That's right.
So, you know, even though we have other options, I feel better about giving them a closer option for them. Now, I'm not gonna make everybody happy, but I hope to make, um, people that have company and plans, I hope to, you know, make it. I try to do my best to, um, not look at the person, look at the area and look at the need and I obviously can see, just by looking at it now, you can see the problems and you can see where the areas need to be changed. And it's my job to listen to the voters, that's what I'm elected to do.
Ms. Jones, you are the supervisor of elections and you have been elected by the people of this county to do such, so we will take your recommendation and now we'll put it to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, good job. You wanna take your stuff with you?
I'll, I'll leave it there.
Uh, good morning. Um, basically, uh, I'm up here, I wanna, um, get approval to enter to agreement with the North Central Florida Regional Plan Council to, uh, do our five-year LMN plan, rewrite and also take care of, uh, the rest of this stuff that goes on with our scope of work that we have to do every year for, um, our grant period that we do. Um, the, I went and got three quotes on that, which, um, you didn't, um, I didn't get the quotes back in time to put in your own package right here, but, um, I went with them and then went with another company, uh, Blue Skies, and then another company, um, AMAC, that we have, we have entered into agreements with before and passed. Um, although, um, North Central Regional, Regional Plan Council came in a lot cheaper. Um, theirs came in at twelve-three, uh, Blue Skies came in at sixteen-nine, and then, of course, AMAC came in at thirty-eight-five. Um, and the, uh, the Blue Skies one probably would have been a lot higher, but they didn't actually come out with a quote as far as doing our meetings or quarterly meetings and all that, not portion of it, that was just the actual, doing the plan portion. Um, the former one that we used to have with our regular, uh, uh, other with the regional plan council that we had, it came in at like eighteen-six, that's what they were gonna do with it. So this one dropped considerably as far as what, what they're gonna do for us and all that there.
Who, who was fighting this move? That guy was a clown. Oh, wait a minute, it's me.
For good reason.
Yeah, it's cheaper dues, it's, they're working for less.
Yeah.
Those are years ago.
Yeah, we still don't quite get the level of service like we did, you know, we didn't get that, that real next door, close and friendly service, but I mean, it's still, you know, we gotta pick and go with the bad.
We accounted for having that now, John. Like thirteen?
Thirteen, thirteen, yeah. And we're like thirteen and a half, what will it?
No, man, we're like ten. There's some small counties, I haven't been to a meeting yet, I've rooted them out, moving up for this. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
Ms. Cannon.
Oh, Ms. Cannon, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, what is the local mitigation strategy, what mitigation are we talking about?
I can answer that fully, but I will refer to.
Basically, what they do is like all the municipalities in the different areas in the county all that, they try to mitigate some kind of like, whether it's stormwater drainage or, you know, some kind of disaster mitigation or something like that. The municipalities and all those get together and they come and they put together a plan of, and prioritize what they need to have done as far as what needs to be done in the county, so.
Preparing the sand and covering.
Then they send it up to the state and it comes back down.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve that presented.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? As a reminder, this is something that is required by the state, so. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. Cannon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, what I've got for, before me is an approval for a grant award, we had applied for, um, back in, actually, September. The, it's the, um, transportation decision, then Shirley Conroy Rule Area Capital Grant. Um, this year, again, I applied for it, um, for a ready wager and we were awarded that at a hundred percent. So I'm asking for approval of, um, this grant in the amount of seventy-three thousand, two fifty-nine to the campus.
I'll make a motion. That's presented.
There was a motion by Commissioner Meeks, a second by Commissioner Rooks, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Matt Welton.
I vote no. I wanted to work this morning to request approval to apply for funding to the river, prod, river, um.
Funding assistance.
Funding assistance to the river program with Swan River Water Management District for reddening of Blue Springs and Little Blue Springs. And restoration around the spring wall. This is a project we've been, um, working on since two thousand and five, I believe, plus as water management district springs initiative and all that, uh, finding that point where we can apply for the funding and move forward with this project. I'll make a motion that we apply.
There was a motion by Commissioner Meeks and a second by Commissioner Rooks. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Sheffield.
Is there an amount or we just see what we can get?
We're gonna apply, ask them for two hundred thousand dollars as this project's, we don't have to apply a permanent sentence in ten more days. We're still getting some of our costs back. Um, we're gonna go for three hundred thousand from this phase and there's possibility we may have to go a second phase and so we'll come back before the board with the next, all depends on what we can get done with this part here. And we won't know that until we get started, obviously.
Matt, how many visitors did we have at Blue Springs last year?
Uh, last year, we had, uh, over twenty thousand visitors.
And how far was the furthest people that came?
Um, we had some people from the Netherlands, we've had people from Germany, we've had people.
Germans. Good people out here.
I can't count them.
Um, it's, it's getting a good reputation, a clean place to come, that you can afford to come and spend the day. Just trying to keep looking forward and make it better every year.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we had a motion to, to second, we got a second through, Rooks, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kinda, kinda don't leave on any desk.
Oh, you gotta go? You have, you need to run?
No, I have lots to do, but yeah.
Shannon, what were you at earlier when I was bringing their G.I.S. that's better than the supervisor of elections? We have really nice G.I.S.
Yes.
Really, Tammy, ours is nice.
Thanks. Oh, I was, I was told I only have three seconds to do this item, but your agenda item here is, um, I guess it's a follow-up item for a while back in the summer of, uh, twenty fifteen, in June, there was a, a four directed staff to further investigate the possibility or, you know, the, the issues of putting the county under a single water management district. And so, staff did that and what's in your package is, is kind of a working graph, it's kind of just a chart showing, um, all the attributes of, of if the county were in one single water management district. Um, it kind of does a comparison between the two water management districts and it's sort of a no-brainer, like, you know, we know Lady County is, is a predominantly rural area. it's sort of a no-brainer, like, you know, we know Lundy County is, is a predominantly rural area, agricultural base. Um, the Swan River Water Management District has like-minded policies there. Most of our county, I think about seventy-five percent of our county is already in the district as it is. So in looking at the information we just gathered and provided in a chart to kind of give you guys a, like a key talking point for the issue. Um, if the board decides to move forward with this, I believe, um, uh, probably you're gonna want to get with Senator Representative Dean Stone. And, um, however you all wanna go forward with that, but staff was just requesting that you hear a quality report from what you had requested back in June. To go come aboard with some more information on this issue. Um, I think that, well, obviously legislation would have to be drafted and the county would be responsible for doing that if you decided to go forward with this. Um, another item that would need to be approved is if you could direct, that ends up to your expiration, but you would direct staff to, uh, compose a letter to send to both water management districts, to Swan River and Southwest Florida Water Management Districts and kind of propose, this is what we're kind of thinking about doing and try and get their feedback. And, um, their next meeting is Southwest Florida, it has a board meeting on October twenty-seventh, so we kind of need, the time is of essence, I guess, right now because of the way session's going and everything's moving ahead.
Do I hear my, to, uh, have staff draft a letter? So you got your letter, all in favor, signify by saying aye? So we got that done.
And, uh, if you wanted your staff to start working, uh, work with legal department or whatever to forward with drafting legislation, that's what we're gonna do, that would be another motion or.
We have a motion by Commissioner Meeks, a second by Commissioner Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Uh, one quick question, and that is that, uh, would there be any action required on the part of municipalities that are currently in swift mud that would be affected by this?
Probably letters of support if, if that was, uh, what it is that you would like, or letters of opposition.
Uh, I'd, I'd appreciate if we could get a copy of the, uh, material that, that Shendry provided to you guys, so we have talk, so we have a talking point and we'll get it to our council.
Same thing for city, being with some town, making. All right, all in, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you have the non-agenda item or is it missing? Any motion here to add an agenda item?
Like a motion here, non-agenda.
Motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Is this the three-second one here?
This is three seconds.
Is this not the same thing we county attorneys talking about?
No, it's a different shit.
A different shit.
No, if, oh, if you don't.
All right, um. This, I'll make it real simple. This is, um, actually, I think, a few months ago, you, every year we do an annual report, we do an annual report for ship, uh, for three years. And I guess to make, a long story short, there's three years in each closeout. Well, the first year, like a twelve, thirteen is their closeout, and then there's two more, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen interim years that are reported to the state. And so what had happened is back in, I forgot when there was the lawsuit, when the state board was suing, um, banks, we had, we had a big settlement and that's how we got the money for ship. Well, the, one of the contingencies was you have to spend the money within two years. So I'm here back with another annual report. It's just for the year, uh, thirteen, fourteen. And it's the same thing as you approved, nothing has changed, it's just the state is requiring the county to resubmit an annual report, so that's all this is gonna do. So staff would just like, the request that you approve the ship annual report to be submitted to the board and housing finance corporation as presented in your packet. And I guess you need to sign the certification form and authorize the chair to sign that.
Thank you, motion.
And that's it.
Motion by Commissioner Rock Meeks, do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Joyner, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, Chairman, can I ask Ms. Connie, where she can go? Get out of line. Can I get you a step over here? I'm not putting you on the spot, I promise you. I just saying something the other day, I'm just gonna ask you. I think I'll be commencing job out there, I'm not complaining about that whatsoever. But did the state statute, are you required? Why the hell do we have to haul these people to court? And if they don't make court on time, then judge asks what, how come you want in court? He says, well, I couldn't catch the transit bus in time. Is it the state statute we have to, I mean, we don't haul them to the house to break in, we don't haul them towards rob, do we got to haul them to court?
We're, we're a public transit, if they wanna pay that, I mean, they call us and we tell them what it'll cost to transport them. We have a two-hour pickup window and within, from the time, say if they have a nine o'clock appointment, we can pick them up at seven, but also within that window, we can give them fifteen minutes before their appointment or fifteen minutes after their appointment, still be within our contract that we have to provide the services, so. They can be late. It's not that we try by any means.
Oh, I understand, and it's not your fault.
No, medical appointments come first. What we've been having to do actually is, um, life sustaining comes first, medical appointments come next, then getting people to the mill sites, then employment comes after that, then schools and beyond that's whatever, divorce or whatever.
Those come last.
And, and basically they do, I mean, we've, we've had to make offers, say sorry, we can't accommodate that trip, cause we can't fit you in, so.
I tell you, that, you've answered the question, so we don't have a state to ask you, so we, we're required, we have to haul them up there, thank you so very much.
Moving on, uh, local safety has been tabled to the next meeting because there was some question about, uh, some more information being provided for the vehicles that will be purchased, so we're gonna skip that today. That brings us around to the county attorney.
My item is, uh, I was approached, uh, by a realtor with a settlement offer on an existing foreclosure going and we've got a second mortgage through a ship program. And the sale is scheduled in December, sale of the property.
Foreclosure sale.
And they're trying to work out another sale, a private sale, and so they have offered the county fifteen hundred dollars to settle our mortgage. Uh, the balance due on the mortgage currently that was requested in the answer to the foreclosure complaint is eight thousand four hundred seventy dollars and five cents. And so I am presenting you that settlement offer. If you don't accept and they don't give a higher offer and it goes to sale and there are excess proceeds, then the board won't get anything, your, your mortgage will be foreclosed. You can make a counteroffer, you can reject it, it's whatever the board chooses to do.
I ain't gonna be back here in a corner, so I'm gonna let somebody else talk.
Well, I mean, this is, this is about the fourth or fifth one of these I've seen in my tenure. You know, and, and it ain't much, but it's something. I mean, our, our other option is that we just get a lien and more than likely these people never buy nothing ever again, you won't ever get to settle your lien, you might as well take what you can get.
And Mr. Chairman, you don't even get a lien. If it goes to foreclosure sale and there are no excess dollars, your interest goes away.
So.
It doesn't go anywhere else, it's gone.
We don't get a lien, so might as well take our fifteen hundred dollars and run, is my opinion. At, at one time, like, uh, Brett Young Commissioner had came up, had come up with the idea that they ought to at least be a percentage of what they owe, but that got shot down, so. I, I don't know, y'all, y'all, we can do whatever we want, y'all can do whatever y'all want. I mean, it sounds like to me it's gonna happen in December, we better make our decision now, or if we counteroffer or refuse the offer.
When we counteroffer the one, I don't know, I remember we counteroffered on one.
I think that counteroffer got refused.
Did you get some more? Did you get more?
The property is in foreclosure and, and somebody is looking to take it and sell it.
To buy it.
To buy it. So it's already gone to the point where we could say, being we're the second person in here as, as a lien holder, we'll just take the property? And maybe we don't have time set up to do that.
No, you'd have to, you'd, in order to, for the board to get the property, you'd have to go to the foreclosure sale and bid.
Even though we, even though we hold the second on it?
Yes, yes, yes. The plaintiff, the, the primary mortgage holder, uh, usually what happens with most of these is they go and they bid. They're prepared to bid up to what they owe, or what, what they're owed. Uh, usually they only bid a hundred dollars, cause there's nowhere to bid. We had one recently where they bid slightly more, where another bidder came in and bid slightly more and got the property, more than what the plaintiff was owed. So the primary mortgage holder will, will show up most likely at the sale and do bid up to what they're owed, plus their costs. So you'll have to, you'll have to go beyond that and, and you've got to manage it.
Well, you know, it hadn't been that long ago that, uh, we got some NSP three funds and with the help of the, uh,
Thousand Forty?
Thousand Authority, done very well. And you know, the difference of, well, with eighty-four hundred dollars left laying on the table. I just hate being put in this situation, I really do.
I hate to put you there, but I'm obligated to do that.
Ms. Tony?
What's the appraisal, the current appraisal value of this property?
I don't know. I haven't done an appraisal, we don't do these.
No, I mean, you can look at the property appraisers website and it'll give you, uh, an assessed value. I mean, is it, is it current, like thirty-five thousand, forty thousand?
I haven't, I haven't done.
So, so if we have the buildings, we could show up there too. And have the opportunity to purchase something and hope to get our, the rest of our money back off of it on a, on a sale somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to front, yeah, you'd have to front some money.
And I don't have a figure in front of me with plans, costs, and then they have court costs on that, they have their attorney fees, and they'll be prepared to bid seven, that's what they'll be on. And, and I don't have that.
Chairman Meeks.
I'm Natalie Thomas, I'm actually the realtor that presents this. And, uh, what happens is, there's a big mortgage on the house and what the bank allows the seller to do is a short sale, which means the bank works with the seller to sell the house for a amount more than what the actual mortgage is. If you go to an auction and you try to buy it, you're gonna have to pay the bank off the full mortgage. You're not gonna get the discounted mortgage and these people owe right at a hundred thousand dollars on their house. So, and just to throw it out there, you can do a counteroffer, but the bank has already made it clear that this is their best and final offer. So just for time's sake, they said they won't consider anything else. Nation Star Mortgage. And she has the emails that the bank sent me, that they're in your correspondence.
And where are they at?
I don't know, Nation Stars everywhere. But the house is in chief, the house in question.
Ms. Cam?
Mr. Sherman, if I heard the lady correctly, the house is worth hundred thousand dollars? And that qualifies for the ship program?
It's based on income of the applicants.
Ask your next question.
Reminds me of the place, uh, where we, where we had the drainage.
Yeah, I totally forgot about that.
We can't believe.
I, as you said, I am just flippant against it, okay?
I guess what we need is we need a, we need to decide what we're gonna do. It seems like, in my memory now, I'm not arguing one way or the other here, but it seemed like my last, my regulation of the last time, I, I didn't know that they accepted our counteroffer. It seemed like it was like five hundred and we countered it with a thousand, cause there was kind of a point of dimension return where they, you know, it, it would be worth less, you know, you can't go above what it's gonna cost them to redraft the, the, their paperwork, you know? So you gotta figure out how much that's gonna cost them. And so if you say, well, we'll do it for three grand, they'll say, well, we'll just redo our paperwork for a thousand and well, whatever, y'all, y'all do whatever you want. It's, it's, this whole program's still a good money after bad, I mean, I, these people shouldn't be forgiven, none of it, they should have to put the toe to the line for everything, cause they, not only have they taken this money and, and I know things happen, don't get me wrong, but this money could have went to another recipient who could have better utilized it and paid the loan off. So, anyway, that's that.
Yeah, look at me.
If I had your money, I'd burn mine.
Look, Mr. Joyner, you are a commissioner, so I'm allowed to look at you.
I'm fine with that.
What's the pleasure of the board, guys? Y'all talking about having to go to the restroom? I'm sitting here waiting on y'all. Whatever y'all think, huh?
What's that, Amber? I make more work, is it gonna be on staff? If we make a counteroffer and they don't approve? Or itself, how much more work is it gonna be on staff? And I'm not trying to undermine y'all's work and put more on you, but I'm saying is it gonna be worse with time and effort if we don't, if we make a counteroffer and they don't accept it?
It's really not gonna take anymore. If, if you make a counteroffer, I, I send that out, uh, then they send back correspondence accepting or rejecting. If they reject it, then I'll still have to review the documents that come in as it goes to sale, so it's, it's no difference, from, from my office, it's no difference.
Well, taking Ms. Thomas's words to heart, and I think her exact words were, this is the maximum, maximum that we're gonna give.
She has the emails from the bank, you had it, they said that's it.
Their, their email says we can only pay fifty over a thousand. If you don't take that, you don't get anything.
And I think we've gotten one, uh, from New Jersey that said.
New Jersey, I think, it's the same thing.
Yeah. And I think, and I think they're the ones that, that give us what, what we asked, but, but I think we doubled it.
I can say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I'm not here to persuade you to do anything one way or the other, but there is a loan that's safe too. So if you deny it and the buyer can't go forward with the loan, then it will go to court.
The, the, there's a short sales and it's kind of in here also.
Ma'am, did you say there's somebody in line ready, ready to buy the, buy this house?
Yes, yeah, when, when you're in foreclosure, what the bank does, uh, to try to avoid going to foreclosure is they offer the seller, they offer to short sell the house, which means they work with the, the seller to sell the house for less than the mortgage amount. The bank is taking a loss either way, whether they do the short sale or they give the foreclosure on it and take it back, they'll probably end up making more money on it. But this is an attempt to give the seller way out, they forgive them the deficit, so they all come after them in the future for, you know, any monies that they didn't recoup. There's some legal benefit to the seller to do a short sale.
But we do have somebody in line to buy the house.
Right, and his loan has been waiting for your meeting to see what your decision is, because he can't buy it with a lien on it. But if you guys counteroffer, then you gotta wait for another meeting, so.
I'll make a motion to put and take fifteen hundred and be done with it. Doesn't mean buy the house.
We have a motion, do I hear a second? On once, on twice, second.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any further discussion? Mr. Sheffield.
Y'all know that I just love the ship program, I mentioned it numerous times. I realize the bank's taking a loss on this, I understand completely, I feel their pain. It took my money to give to the ship program. As somebody who lived in a little ass house than these people obviously have and paid my taxes and paid for my house, since I'm gonna get a tax bill next month, I'm willing to offer thirty cents on the dollar, would y'all take it?
Contracted.
I understand the offer.
Did you, uh?
Thirty cent on the dollar, is that it?
On my taxes.
On these taxes, personal taxes. If we, uh, if we reject your offer, you realize we can come get your house.
But y'all can't go take these people's house, who didn't pay their bills like I do.
To clarify, the board could have foreclosed on this. They could be the plaintiff in foreclosing, but the board has never taken that direction.
They could take my thirty cents on the dollar offer. Good, for my taxes.
Mr. Sheffield, you're, you're probably the second most wealthy man in this room besides Commissioner Joyner, so I do, I do, uh, like the argument for, you know, devil's advocate here, but.
Oh, oh, good solution.
I know.
For the people who behave, you, who do what they're supposed to do.
Yes, sir, and you, you heard my statement earlier, how I feel about it. It's, it's not only is it a shame that the money's lost, it's a shame that this money could've helped. If you happen to know, know the individual. Yes, sir.
Uh, just a quick question, all right. Are there, well, first of all, I guess, is, is whose rules govern the ship program? Is that, is it set by the county or by the state or?
It's, it's federal through the state.
There's an application process that you fill out. And in most cases, what happens, and, and I'm maybe speaking out of turn if I am the same term, shut up. You know, people do this with good faith and, and something happens, a life event happens, they have an accident, they lose their job, maybe they go to divorce, something happens that causes them, you know, this, nobody goes out there and signs up for the ship program just to default on it, but, um. But that's what, I mean, these people have good credit, I mean, it's a pretty extensive process you have to go through.
Basically, what I was, I guess the, the genesis of the question was, is there anything that the county can do to affect the way the ship program is administered that might help?
Weed out some of the?
Well, yeah, I mean, or, or at least make it a little bit more palatable to, to the, uh, to the county.
Well, for every, every one of these we see, there's probably ten success stories of people who were able to purchase their first home, have their home rehab through the ship program, you know? It's like the bad news travels fast and good news doesn't go anywhere kind of thing. Same sort of deal.
And, and the, the board also develops its plan, its housing plan, that there is some leeway in the application process, but all of that has to fit under the state and federal type of business. There is some leeway, they do their plan and the, the state project.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Joyner and a second by Commissioner Stevens to accept the fifteen hundred dollar settlement offer.
Reluctant.
Reluctantly, all in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Reports, I think, is up next, I've lost my agenda.
You're right.
Public comments, excuse me, public comment. Anyone here that speak on behalf of public comments? Mr. Grant?
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of information and, uh, I think it could come under old business. A few weeks ago, I had the, the opportunity to drive from the, uh, High Springs, four forty-one area down seventy-five and I went all the way down into Marion County. Coming south, I saw no signs at all, the billboards at all for Levy County. Coming north, I saw two within a mile of each other and none of them were near the exits going to Levy County.
Thank you.
Signs look good?
No.
Thank you, man.
Wrong colors, red and black.
And there was no exit signs for Levy County on those signs and they were nowhere near an exit.
Was there a website on there?
Yes, totally different.
Yeah, seelevy.com, which goes to a, a real estate.
No, a web builder, a web builder.
Oh, yeah.
Goes to a what now?
A web builder site, you know, like GoDaddy, da, 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 it was called Cliffs or Clots or some, I don't know, there's a thousand of them out there. It didn't take us to Levy County, I can tell you that.
I know the, the website was supposed to have taken you to a link to something.
To our, is it Levy?
Yes.
Website. All right, um, thank you. You're right, I'm sorry, y'all, these are all good. Hold them up. What is it? You are. All right. Passing out the bills, sorry. All right, Commissioner Reports.
Seelevy.com. I know.
Commissioner Joyner?
Oh.
Send me your pictures of them.
I will wait and let the chairman advise us what all we have this weekend, or there's quite a bit going on.
I may have lost mine, so.